Okay, we called over this evening of the Galt City Council. The council just returned from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to report?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The council was in closed session this evening on public employee performance evaluation. There's no action to report.
Thank you. Local call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Here.
Councilmember Hewer?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Powers?
Mayor Cruz?
Here. Would you all please rise for silence, followed by the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could we get the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable System. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, February 5th at 9:00 a.m., and Saturday, February 6th at 9:00 a.m. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at www.factmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. Our economic development update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. Tonight, I just wanted to give you all a quick update on what I've been working on since coming onboard with the city back in October. End of October I started, and so I have put together a brief presentation. And, you know, most of my work plan that I've sort of been working on over the last several months is revolving around the comprehensive economic development strategy that was approved by city council back in 2014, as well as the city council's economic development strategy. And so taking those two documents, I've sort of put together a work plan and started influencing that over the last couple of months. Just wanted to make sure that everybody had an idea of what I've been working on, make sure I'm going in the right direction, and if there's any comments or questions or things that, you know, you might need to redirect, feel free at the end to give me any feedback that you can. The primary focus of the work plan at this point is really related to retail recruitment, industrial, and business retention efforts, as well as the development of Old Town. And so primarily, I've been working on, as we started, just the marketing and outreach material and wanting to put together some materials sort of highlighting the city, material that I can hand out to different brokers and developers and retailers. And started, most of this was started back in last year when the former city manager was here with Chaven Concepts. They did the comprehensive economic development plan, and so some of the marketing material had been started, which I have been working on with Chaven to close that contract out, and you'll see some of that material as we move forward. Also talk a little bit about the retail activity, what's been happening here in the market in Galt, and just, you know, in general in the region. Also, a little bit about the industrial side of things here as it relates to Galt and business retention efforts as well, and some of the things that I've heard from the community as I've gone out and talked to some of the businesses. And then lastly, we'll talk about sort of what my plan is moving forward and getting any feedback that you guys might have as it relates to that. First off is the marketing and outreach. Each of you has a packet in front of you that contains most of this information, but the retail overview, the actual overview piece is still being finalized, but for the most part, everything's in there. And Chaven had started working on this. The primary component is the marketing flyers for the individual properties, and so obviously Simmerhorn's really large commercial piece of property that we have here in Galt, that's a big focus, as well as the Twin Cities corridor and the Old Town area. And so those three marketing pieces will be used sort of to hand out to different retailers and developers, even regional restaurants that may be interested in the Old Town area that provide a little bit of an overview on the trade area, but also specific information to each of those retail sites. The other piece is a general marketing overview on the retail side of things related to Galt. And so demographic heavy, a lot of trade area information in there, talks a little bit about some of the efforts that the city's worked on as it relates to economic development activities with the extension of the water line for Simmerhorn, some of the more progressive things the city's been doing on the retail, on the, on the commercial development side. These marketing pieces will be used to market the city as a whole, but also specific to targeted retailers as we move forward. And so they're available electronically. Each of you has a USB that's been put together. All of these documents are on there. A lot of times developers and brokers don't want me to hand this paper, they'd much rather electronically, so the USB is really helpful as it relates to those efforts. In developing the marketing materials, one of the things I noticed coming onboard is that we don't have a great selection of pictures that highlight Galt, and so I did enlist the help of a downtown photographer, Robin Peters, with RFP Creative Studios. He helped me go out and shoot some of the different properties that are available here in Galt, highlighting some of the retail areas, but also really wanting to focus on some of the quality life in Galt in particular, not wanting to be cookie cutter, sort of snapping shots of retail areas, but really wanting to stand out and show what makes Galt unique, and a lot of that goes to the downtown area, the Old Town area, some of the community events, and so those are also being highlighted in the photos that were taken. Robin actually had a lot of these already on his computer, ones that he had taken already, so we were able to kind of utilize those, and he's got a lot more I'm digging through to take advantage of moving forward. But I can use these in marketing material, but also with the website. I'll be working on a website update moving forward, so taking these pictures and kind of moving them over. On the marketing and outreach side with the pictures, we've folded that into a presentation folder that you have in front of you. The folder was put together really, when I go talk to businesses, I like to have something to enclose all of the incentive information and materials in, so this was sort of a key piece in that. Also for, you know, retail meetings or meetings with different developers or brokers to be able to hand them something that really highlights the city and the community. And so the presentation folder was put together just recently by Express Typing Graphics to help design this. They've been very helpful in some of the efforts on the marketing side. And then again, the USB was one that we branded, and I have, you know, copies of it, I'll be handing out at different trade shows, but again, the electronic material is a lot less expensive, and it's also something that the brokers and developers will utilize, and we'd like to remind them of Galt when they take it out and use it. So I have given each of you the USBs, and all of this material is loaded on them, you can see that. On the retail activity side, you know, I'm not the only one out there marketing the city. Each of the individual commercial corridors and commercial centers have their own brokers, and so this just shows some of the property flyers that are out there that are used to advertise to the retailers. And, you know, I've done a lot of outreach, I've talked to a lot of the retail brokers here in town, most of them actually have outreach too, and it's great for me to get feedback from them on what the retailers think about Galt, some of the hurdles that we have to get over in order to attract some other larger retailers specifically, as well as restaurants. And so it's been really helpful to connect with each of them, and trade shows and things that I move forward and go to, I'll be able to meet with them and get specifics and help them sell the community of Galt really as a communication piece, wanting to make sure they know what's happening here, so that they can communicate that to potential retailers. Specific to retail activities, these are some of the larger commercial areas that we have. Galt Village, obviously where the Rayleigh Shopping Center is, and there's really not much vacancy in that center at all. The Blockbuster was a big focus, trying to get that reused done, and we've received plans for one retailer that's going in there, they have another one, there's an LOI for a second piece of that property, and the remnant piece is about 800 square feet, that's about all that will be left in that building. The only other space is about 1,300 square feet, it's an inline space that was a former tanning salon that's vacant, and according to the broker, he doesn't think it's going to take them long to re-lease that. The other piece is the Dollar Tree sublease. Obviously Dollar Tree's not going to stay open for a significant period of time, and they are subleasing that space, and so they have an LOI for the property, and we're hopeful that we'll see that lease come to fruition and move forward, and hopefully we'll have another national retailer that we can announce within the next couple of months, and so that looks hopeful as we move into the future. The only other space out there is the pad in front of us, the Comfort Inn, and so that piece is available, really pushing the broker for restaurants, about 4,000 square feet would be perfect for, you know, Black Bear Diner, or Panera, or somebody along those lines. It's really convincing the retailers and the restaurant, the national sit-down chains that we can support a national chain restaurant. You know, the magic number is 30,000, that's what they look for in a community, Galt's not there yet, so, you know, we really need to sell the fact that we have a larger trade area that we draw from, it's not just Galt, there is a larger, you know, area that comes into town. And one of the things I shared with Greg a little while ago is that the HDL, our sales tax, Tim Holton had shared with me that Rayleigh's in the third quarter is the second largest sales tax generator for Rayleigh's in their portfolio in California. And so that Rayleigh's obviously does really well in Galt, and it's not just Galt people that are shopping there, and so trying to make sure that we can communicate that to some of the retailers to make sure they understand kind of the area that we're drawing from. The Corillian Corner Center is just east of the Galt Village Center where Rite Aid is, and there's no vacancy in that center right now. They do have a pad that is an out parcel that runs onto the property just adjacent to Rite Aid, and we talked to the broker, actually the actual developer of the property last week, and we expect plans for that piece of property within the next month, are waiting for the rain to stop, and they will be submitting. And they have a drive-through that had been planned for that space, as well as another restaurant, they haven't told us yet who that is, but, you know, we're hopeful moving forward that that space will be 100% leased as well. So the retailers are doing well, just communicating that to other larger retailers so they understand what that picture is. The other site, Corillian, is a 1.4 acre piece just adjacent to Dollar Tree, and, you know, there's been a little bit of activity, I think as the market turns around and some of the retailers are getting antsy and seeing the population growth here, you'll see that probably within the next year or so that get built out. The Simmerhorn Commercial Project, that's a 45 acre piece of property, Highway Commercial, and that property, we anticipate a master development plan from the developer within the next couple of months, and I can begin marketing that, they'll have a broker onboard to market that as well. And so that will really be driven by really the market in terms of if we can get an anchor over there, that will really dictate sort of how the rest of the center develops. And, you know, what's been encouraging is that you see loads right now that's come out with a smaller footprint, we've seen coals that's come out with a smaller footprint target, that, you know, they realize that they can't go in with these massive stores in all of their cities, and so they've sort of redesigned that footprint to connect with some of the smaller cities, and I think that that's really going to be a target for us moving forward. The other location is the Old Town and Downtown area, the Save Mart Center. Been trying to get in touch with the Save Mart folks, I'm hoping to meet with them at a retail trade show I'm going to to talk about their location in general, the Save Mart, but also the rest of the center, wanting to get in touch with the property owners there to see how they're doing on their retail attraction efforts, who they're talking to, what they're trying to target, and, you know, try and supplement what they're doing there. And then obviously, Old Town is a big target as well. For me personally, reaching out to the individual property owners and talking to them about who they're targeting, how we can assist in those outreach efforts, talking to regional restaurants and surrounding communities, what kind of incentives can be offered, can they subsidize rent, can they assist with an improvement allowance, things along those lines to sort of help us market some of the spaces that are available down there. As I mentioned, you know, communicating to the brokers is really imperative for me because I need them to understand where the population growth is happening. It's known in the retail community that rooftops bring retail, that's what drives retail in any community, and knowing that there are homes being built, knowing that there are families moving into town, that's what's going to bring the retailers and the larger retailers into this town. The Dry Creek Development, the Cedar Flats Development, the Eastview Development, those are imperative for us to be able to target some of the larger retailers and get them to consider Galt. And so being able to point to some of those retail activities or those residential activities is really important. This map is difficult to read, I know you might be able to see it in your presentation packet a little bit better, but the brokers in particular really love this map because it shows all of the residential activity happening in town, and to be able to point to this large of an area and show this many homes being built, you don't see that in a lot of communities right now, and so they love this because they can use this as they outreach to retailers as well. Which, you know, we're to the industrial side, there is not much on the market in this town as it relates to industrial, very few buildings. In terms of, you know, what's for lease, there are four buildings for lease, and the largest one is 20,000, 27,000 square feet. That doesn't leave a lot of variety for new users coming into town, even ones that are looking to expand, and so that makes it a little bit difficult to attract new businesses into town. The, for sale market, there's nothing for sale. There's no buildings for sale on industrial side. There is land for sale, but 13 acres isn't going to bring in a very big industrial user, and so the annexation of property is going to be huge as it relates to the industrial piece to really bring in some of these new users. But what really is important, I think, to focus on, since we don't have the industrial land right at this moment, is business retention efforts. And I've been out and talked to several of the businesses here in town, and most of the industrial users I've talked to are very happy in Galt, and most of them are expanding, a lot of them are hiring. I talked to Cal Waste, I talked to McLaughlin Waste Containers, they're all hiring right now, which is great to see because, you know, as the market turns around, you start to see a big uptick in the job creation, and those numbers are great for retailers because they like to see the daytime population here. And so everything's connected in that way, but really, you know, in terms of the community, 70% of your new job growth is coming from your business, existing businesses, and so it's important to connect with them and make sure that they know of the incentives that are available, what the city has to offer, how we can help them facilitate if it's expanding, they're looking for a new building, anything along those lines, we want to make sure that they are connected to us. And so my business retention efforts really moving forward are focusing on some of the top employers in town, the top sales tax generators, and I will be creating a visitation program just to make sure that all of the businesses outside of the top employers and top sales tax generators have access to us, if there's, you know, if they want a council member to visit, if they want the city manager to visit, if I can go in and give a presentation on some of the incentives that are available, just want to make sure that we can connect with them and they feel comfortable contacting us. The last thing I want is a business looking to expand and going outside of the city. This is a brief overview of some of the incentives that are available at the state level and regional level, as well as the city level. You know, California's not known for being very business friendly, but they do have a new program that California competes tax credit program that is very lucrative for businesses looking to expand. And so as I go out and talk to businesses, I just want to make sure that they're aware of what's out there. Most of the businesses I've talked to have expanded, and they had no idea this existed. And it is a very lucrative tax credit program. The other thing is the sales and use tax exemption at the state level for any new equipment, and so making sure that our manufacturers are aware when they're buying large pieces of equipment, they don't have to pay sales tax, at least the state's paying the sales tax on that equipment, which saves them a lot of money. So the communication piece is big as a business retention effort moves forward. The other things are smudged, you know, they have different programs available and resources available. Galt qualifies as the USDA ad territories, there's lots of loan programs and grant programs out there, and these are things that a lot of our existing businesses aren't aware of, and so we just want to make sure that we're communicating that to them. So part of this sort of overview piece on the incentive side is just to be able, even if I can't connect with somebody, to be able to drop something off, quick overview piece that talks about some of the incentives that are available. You know, at our local level, we have our PACE program, we have Skip available, you know, there are things that our local businesses can take advantage of that we offer through the city. And so moving forward, that will be one of the things I focus on, on the outreach side. Lastly is just sort of talking about what I'll be doing in the next six to eight months. I am working on updating the economic development portion of the website, refreshing it, adding the incentives that are out there available, properties that are available, wanting to make sure that existing businesses, but businesses just looking in the city have access to myself to be able to, you know, usher them through the process, to facilitate any of the permitting or, you know, red tape they have to go through at the state level or at the city level. And so I will be updating the website, I'm hoping to put together a newsletter that will be going on on a quarterly basis, highlighting some of the new projects that are happening, residential being a big one, also talking about new businesses that are opening, community events, just making sure that we're able to communicate to businesses as well as retailers and brokers, and so I'll be working on that moving forward. The other thing is incentive program development. There are things I think that we can do at a city level to incentivize some of these businesses, especially the industrial users coming into town. Use tax rebate is one, that is really popular in other cities, and so I think that'll be important to implement. Really doesn't impact the city, it actually brings money into the city at a use tax level that we wouldn't otherwise get, and so that is something I will be focusing on. And then also annexation, you know, that being a big key to the industrial side of things, wanting to make sure that annexation gets done so we have the industrial property available as we move forward, so. And with that, that is all I have for you this evening. If there's any questions or comments, feedback that you have, I'm happy to take that from you.
Counselor.
One of the things that I'd like to see us do is to try to get more diversity in our industrial area, as it is now, most of it is related to the building industry, which we all know goes up and down. We have L&amp;L, which is, I think mostly millwork type of product, and then we have Cardinal Glass, and we have BMD, and we are thankful, so thankful to have them here, but I think that our employment is vulnerable based on the building cycle.
When things are good, things are really good, and when things are bad, they're really bad. It's understandable, and, you know, I came from a community where it was primarily distribution, that was their, you know, big industry, and it's sort of a catch-22, that's pretty, it's pretty steady in terms of, you know, it doesn't ebb and flow like you see with some of the construction or manufacturing industry, but at the same time, they're lower paying jobs, and, you know, there's a lower skill set that goes along with it. And so with newer industrial land coming online, I think that will be a little bit easier on the attraction side to help us out with, but as it stands right now, you're right, there is, it's a big building industry, a lot of it is dependent on construction, and so things are good right now, which is why everybody's hiring, but yes, I do, I do agree with you.
So I wanted to say it was a very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Kirk?
No, it was a very nice packet, and glad to see that we've got a lot of the information updated and all in one spot, which is very good, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Laurie?
Good morning.
Awesome job, Amy, thank you. Moving on to proposed revisions to the Federal Emergency Management Agency flood hazard map.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'll give you a quick introduction, and then we'll be turning the technical presentation over to Mr. Bill Forrest. So this item is to present information to the council and the public regarding some proposed revisions to the FEMA flood hazard maps in and around the city of Galt, and the effects on the city or its properties. The floodplain mapping process that FEMA uses tends to be rather technical and filled with acronyms. We'll try to keep those to a minimum tonight and provide you with a simplified overview of the process and what's being proposed. By way of background, in April of 2015, FEMA visited with us and shared with staff, as well as San Joaquin County and Sacramento County staff, some of their findings from a study that they had conducted that was actually initiated at the request of the Department of Water Resources at the state level, which put together a lot of the technical data and announced FEMA to come in and consider that data. And so in late October, we received notification that they had finalized their determinations based on that new information and would be publishing notices of their findings in the Federal Register and in various local papers. That publication of notice started a 90-day appeal period, and which we're coming toward the end of, so we wanted to give you some information about the process. And this demonstrates, there are no particular concerns at a staff level, we've only received, based on those notices in the newspaper, one written comment from a concerned property owner who actually lives outside the city of Galt city limits, and he also wrote a similar letter to the one we received to Sacramento County, which did formally respond. Unfortunately, that property owner didn't provide any technical information that would allow us to form the basis of any kind of appeal, rather just anecdotally that he felt that his property should be classified at a lower flood risk. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, that long-winded introduction out of the way, I'm going to turn it over to Bill to kind of walk you through some of an overview of the changes that are being proposed.
Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer with your Public Works Department. I'm going to start off with some points of information, general points of information regarding flooding. Flooding is the most prevalent and most costly natural disaster as it occurs in the United States. In the high-risk areas, which are the map floodplains, a structure could experience a 1 in 4 chance of having a flood event during the course of a 30-year typical mortgage on that property. Any structures, residential, and businesses that are within a flood hazard area is required to get flood insurance if they have a federally backed mortgage. And it's not just restricted to the high-flooded areas, the moderate to low-risk areas, which are outside the map floodplains, they can experience, about 20% of the submitted flood claims are from properties outside of map hazard areas. They're not required to get flood insurance, but it's highly recommended, and they'd be eligible for what's called a preferred risk policy, where you can get coverage on the building as well as your content at a very low price, a comparatively low price. As Steve mentioned, it's really hard not to talk and jargon and acronyms, but I'll do my best. Flood hazard areas are the areas subject to flooding of a storm event of a certain size, typically referred to as the 100-year event or a 1% chance of flood. Think of it as a black marble is equivalent to a storm of such a duration, you throw it in a bag with 99 other white marbles, you shake the bag, you could pull that black marble, you throw it back in, you could shake it up, you could pull it again, or you may not. So that's why the people in Rio Linda said, well, we've had 300-year storm events in 20 years, so the parliament's just trying to get away from referencing that. Base flood elevations is simply the elevation that the water is computed, projected to rise to with a 100-year or 1% storm event. The zone AE, which we'll see examples of, is a flood hazard area where the elevations have been determined. The Zone AE, which we'll see examples of, is a flood hazard area where the elevations have been determined. Alongside of it is what's called the Zone A, which is an area delineated as flooding, but that area has been done with what's called approximate methods, and so an elevation of the water has not been projected. It's just kind of a plan view. Regulatory floodway, think of it as the area that needs to be preserved of a channel, you know, no development, no structures, kind of the area that's needed to convey the flood flows without having that impact, a significant impact. That's right. Why are the flood maps being changed? As Steve mentioned, the State Department of Water Resources initiated a flood insurance rate study for Dry Creek, Coyote Creek, Goose Creek, and unnamed tributary in Sacramento County and San Joaquin County. The effect, those sites Dry Creek, the, those other creeks named are actually in San Joaquin County, so they were also affected by this remap effort. As you probably know, Dry Creek forms the southern boundary of the city, as well as forms the boundary between Sacramento County and San Joaquin County. The 2012 maps, which was the last update to the flood insurance maps, shows Dry Creek as a Zone A and an AE in different sections. The study was based upon detailed topographic information obtained by the state, as well as a detailed hydrologic. Think of hydrologic as what happens when the rain falls in the watershed, how much water will result. And then hydraulic is modeling the creek, for a lack of a better term. It's, it's what that water, the rain, does in the creek, and all this is done with advanced computer modeling. Reason why it was important, the better information, the better topography, the better detailed study, the hydrologic, hydraulic analysis, the establishment of the base flood elevations, and as you'll see in the examples I'll present, the floodplain maps now have base aerial photography, they've updated that. All that helps with the counties and the city in terms of implementing and floodplain management, floodplain administration. As mentioned, the base aerial photography has been updated, and then I'll show some of the, what's called the map panels have been split to show areas in a greater detail. As mentioned, the highlighted numbers are the panels affected by the restudy. Here's the city outline, this is the notch area, and so these panels were affected somewhat by the restudy of Dry Creek. As mentioned, the, some of the panels were split, so what I call the 047H is now split into two there. And this whole was, used to be 0500, and now it's been split in a third. You still have 0500, but it's the north half, and the southerly half has been split in the two. So you, the maps can be shown in a higher scale, more detail. This is an area actually just to the east of the city limits along Dry Creek. This was the effective map that was adopted in 2012. What you see is this whole area, this blue mapped area is a Zone A. And then with the restudy, you now have, the blue is the 100-year, oops, I'm pointing to the back of the chair. The blue is a, is the 100-year or the 1%. The brown is now the 500-year or the .25%. And so, it's reflective of the better topography, the information, and so, for example, one of the things, the base photography in the 2012 map was taken in 2001, and for the 2015 was 2014. And so, this is the solar farm, this is Bosal Road right here, this is Cherokee right here, again, this is Dry Creek along the south. The floodway is this little hatched area. As you can see previously, when it was a Zone A, there was no floodway there, so now they've established it. They decided not to carry the floodway further, they ended it right here. These, a little hard to see, but these little black lines are the base flood elevations. So if someone came in and said, "Okay, I live here, I can now go to the map and say, okay, well, your 100-year water surface elevation is X." And, and per our floodplain management ordinance, which we redid, I think it was about two years ago, if they built a structure in the floodplain, they would be required to elevate the lowest floor to be a foot above that flood hazard elevation. Of interest, as I mentioned, the restudy affected San Joaquin County, and one of the areas of interest to the city is the proposed Delta College campus. This is the original map for San Joaquin area in San Joaquin County done in 2009. Here's Liberty Ranch, Lower Sacramento, this is Highway 99. Previously, in the 2009 map, all this was a Zone A, and then with the new map, they have, this is still a Zone A, but the southerly area, which corresponds to this, is now a Zone AE. Again, with the better topography, the better water surface elevations, we now know this area at the northeast corner of Lower Sacramento and Liberty Ranch Road is no longer subject to flooding, as it was previously shown in the 2009 map. In comparing the 2012 to the, to the, to the new clamoring maps, this was the only area that I determined where the new floodplain went a little bit beyond the old floodplain. This is the Crystal Way exit, this is Highway 99, this is the golf course, here's the clubhouse, this is Crystal Way, that little step street, this is the Dry Creek Estates subdivision map that came before council. In the old map, the, this was all Zone AE, this white hatched area is the floodway, but the Zone AE ended right there. This black line is the city-county boundary. And so, with the new map, what you'll notice is, A, floodway is really noticeable, because they've gone to a red stripe. The, for example, this squiggly line represents a 49-foot elevation. Now, the 49, and this is, I believe, the driving range, and this is like a little county pocket that the city limits go around. So in the old map, the 49 elevation was right there near the top, and in the new map, it's quite a bit, if you go further south, you now have an elevation 50, which you didn't have before, because this elevation was 49. So the old map was saying this area was essentially a flat water surface in the 100-year. So even with that, you know, slightly higher elevation and whatnot, in the comparison, the red line, the red line is 2012, this is the 100-year floodplain line, the blue is the 2015. So right in this area, it's a little bit more. This red and blue overhears the extent of the 500-year floodplain. Even that's been modified, but again, that's considered a moderate, a low-risk area and a concern. So the impacts of Galt in analyzing the floodplain maps, all the areas except for the one I just highlighted for you, the 100-year floodplain are either stayed the same or actually pulled back a little bit. The one area with the increase was comparatively marginal. It's still, for example, outside the boundaries of development for that Dry Creek Estates. And in some areas, the floodplain went from a Zone A to a Zone AE. And again, as mentioned, that additional information is quite helpful, not only to us as the floodplain administrators, but also for someone who potentially wanted to, you know, build a structure, do a substantial improvement in, in a structure. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Questions from council?
Yeah, how did the Department of Water Resources determine that these creeks need to be studied and not others in the surrounding area?
In reading the study, they don't go into it. I believe there was, like I said, I believe, I don't have concrete that, there was a possible concern about some of these tributaries, particularly in San Joaquin County, the impacts of upstream development upon Dry Creek itself. State DWR is part of their Central Valley, I'm going to mess up the name, but essentially their flood management plan. The state had a lot of detailed topographic information that they didn't have previously. And so, I think all of these things kind of came together in, for the state to decide to remodel and remap this area.
I could add to that briefly, I think it was back in either 2009 or 10, Senate Bill 5 was passed along with a package of flood bills that created a new requirement for 200-year flood protection within the Central Valley. And so, the state was pushing to develop the mapping data to allow that 200-year delineation to be done. But once they developed that, that LiDAR data and better mapping, they then said, "Well, we've got to get this to FEMA." And so, they used that as they do map updates, so I think that was partly part of what was going on, was once DWR had this better mapping data, then they felt compelled to give it to FEMA and say, "Hey, we have better information. You need to take another look at your maps."
So with the other, so with the flood maps for Galt and the surrounding area, they've been updated to show the 200-foot delineation? The 200-year delineation?
FEMA, if you will, doesn't recognize the 200-year.
I was going to say, it's only been 100 and 500 historically.
And 10, and.
Right.
So, one idea behind the better mapping is if you can show an area is even outside the 500-year floodplain, the brown areas, as I showed on the map, well, then for sure, it's outside the 200-year. And so, I think that was another impetus behind the better detailed study is, okay, FEMA doesn't recognize the 200-year, that's a, that's a state mandate, if you will. So, like I said, the thought is if you can show an area is out, you know, outside the 100-year and even outside the 500-year, well, then certainly it's outside the 200-year.
Okay. Thank you. That was good.
Are these maps available to the public online or?
Yes, they're on the city's website, under Public Works, Forms and Publication, there's a, they're all available. As Steve mentioned, there was public notices placed in Galt Herald back in November for two cycles. They are available, not only on the city's website, the letter from FEMA particularly makes reference to the FEMA map store, where you can actually view the information there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill. Moving on to the next, Galt Youth Commission Teen Art Exhibit.
Hi, my name is Juliet Rodriguez, and I serve as Secretary for the Galt Youth Commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and for allowing me to present a very special, a very special event that the Galt Youth Commission is creating. We believe it will aid in the fulfillment of the Galt Youth Commission's purpose, which is to collaborate with city departments, community businesses, and nonprofit organizations, to encourage the youth to participate in activities, and to receive input from the community on issues relevant to teens and terms of resourcing advocates for the city council on teen issues. On April 29th of this year, at the Galt Little Teen Center, we are planning to host a teen perspective art exhibit. Our event promotes the opportunity for our community youth to share their feelings about what it is like to be a teenager through art and creative expression. Often, teenagers find it difficult to communicate with adults about their feelings, their needs, their aspirations, their fears, their desires, the things that hold them back, and the things that set them free, things that drag their focus on dark issues, and those things that inspire them to change, to do good, and to help others. We are teenagers, and we understand this difficulty. Our goal is twofold, to offer the youth the opportunity to allow creative expression, and to inform you, the city council, and other stakeholders of the issues that are at the forefront from our perspective, which may affect decisions about youth and youth programming and activities within the community. Through this lens, is an honest and candid look at what our teenagers are thinking. This event will be open to all middle and high school age students in Galt. Art submissions will focus on the events, occurrences, and feelings of our teenagers. Artwork must be drawing, painting, graphic design, or poetry, and the artwork also must be 11 inches by 17 inches or smaller. Let me share some of the progress that we have made so far. To help cover the cost of this event, the Galt Youth Commission is currently partnered with the Galt Sunrise Rotary, as they have offered their resources that have enabled us to apply for nonprofit grants to agencies such as UC Davis, Kaiser, Grant Advisory Board for Youth, California Endowment, and more. In seeking financial support for this event, many lively conversations have ensued regarding the subject matter that may be submitted by the teenagers. Our next step was to invite Mr. David Herberger, owner of the Galt Herald, to join a planning meeting to help us, help us understand the blending of our event, the freedom of expression, and our mission to offer, to offer youth, the city council, and other stakeholders in the community an honest and candid look at what our teenagers are thinking. While Mr. Herberger expressed admiration for our project and full support from his newspaper, we were advised to seek the city council regarding some of the challenges that we would face when bringing our event to life. Galt Youth Commission adult mentors and faculty met with Mr. Steve Rudolph to discuss the event, our goals, and our responsibilities as a branch of the city council. We were advised by the city attorney that we, as Galt Youth Commissioners, were constrained to the same public display protocol as the city of Galt itself. This would require that all of the art on display would be at the discretion of the city and/or city personnel. However, to achieve our goal of honest and creative expression and fulfill our mission of informing the city council and stakeholders in our community of the challenges, all challenges, that our youth are facing, it was determined that we could combine all of the exhibited artwork and any artwork determined to be not in line artwork and any artwork determined to be not in line with the City of GALT protocol for public display on city property, and combine them as a single book form document. Then submit this document for review by the City Council and stakeholders. As well, this book would become a public record, and the public, by request, would be able to access and review the completed works of art. Our mission and message would be communicated in full. In order to do this, the original artworks will become property of the GALT Youth Commission. The application for submissions of artwork will include a disclaimer supplied by the city attorney. We are asking that the award-winning artworks be displayed in the GALT City Hall or the lobby marquee. Our intention is to request that the award-winning artwork be placed on a traveling exhibit at Liberty Ranch High School, GALT High School, Estrelita High School, and McCaffrey Middle School. In addition, we are in the process of securing speaker Michael Pritchard for the evening of the art exhibit. Michael Pritchard is a nationally acclaimed keynote speaker praised by The Wall Street Journal, CNN, and Time for his ability to use humor to inspire and educate his audience on life skills. Using his unique humorous style, he empowers his young audience with social and emotional skills and influences them to do good. We feel that Michael Pritchard will ensure that our message of what it is like to be a teenager is communicated in a powerful and engaging manner. I hope that I have outlined our intentions for the art exhibit, submission of a public document, and the goals for the outcome in a manner that has answered most of your questions regarding our process and goals. We, the GALT Youth Commission, are really excited about this event, as it gets to the heart of our purpose, to serve as a resource for the City Council and advise them on teen issues. Your respectful request for the support of the City Council and the allowance to proceed with the planning of our event. We hope that you will mark this event on your calendar for April 29th of 2016, at the GALT Littleton Center, with the exhibit starting at 6:00 PM, Michael Pritchard's presentation at 7:00 PM, and the exhibit closing at 8:30 PM. Thank you for your time and consideration. May I ask there any questions?
Counsel?
Yeah, I'm curious. How will the exhibits be judged and by who?
We have a list of judges so far. Several of them are teachers, and several of them are just community leaders. Some of them, we have Mary Lee Powers, and we still have to ask, we were waiting to ask until we came to talk to the City Council and get your guys' blessing to continue.
Okay. I'm just, if you, depending on the type of art, I would think you'd want to have some people with some expertise, I would think, in either photography or poetry or whatever the venue is that's going to be portrayed. But I think it's a next one idea, and hope to be there.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Oh, sounds good. I'm honored.
May I ask the city attorney? I see this has recommended action. Do we just need a consensus? Should this have to be voted upon?
Since it's on the agenda as an action item, I think a motion would be appropriate just to report the event.
Do a motion. Motion by Councilman Campion. Second vice mayor Payne, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Go forward.
Thank you again for your time, and I would like to introduce the subcommittee that has been working very hard to make this event possible. This is Kristen Knorr. This is Alex Geras. This is Paige Lachter. And I would also like to recognize the adult members who have been guiding us on our way through creating this event. So thank you again. I hope you guys will all attend this event.
Outstanding. Thank you.
I would actually like to ask Lisa Clocks to stand up, because she has put so much time, yes, ma'am. And if you would like to say a couple of words about the committee, that would be appropriate as well. But wanted to say how much we appreciate your interest and creation, creativity.
Well, thank you very much, but I'd really like the attention to stay on the youth. They have taken hold of this project from the beginning. It was their original conception. We had to overcome quite a few hurdles, as you could imagine. And the youth have learned a lot about First Amendment rights, freedom of expression, about government, about policy, about negotiation, about compromise. And they've done it all with grace and great maturity, and I'm sure that you will be seeing a really wonderful show. So thank you to the youth.
Thank you, Lisa.
Moving on to item number four, Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Report to the City.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce our 2015 Parks and Recreation Commission Chair and Janice Ruthinger. Ms. Ruthinger has also been elected to our 2016 chair, and she will be giving you her report.
Thank you. Again, my name is Janice Ruthinger. Have a hard time pronouncing it. And I'd like to go over a couple of things we attended, and Mondo wrote down that one or more of us that I want to say, the ethics training, AB 1234, Steve, we all went through that.
Oh, great.
Thank you. CPRS conference was in Sacramento this year, and most of us attended it. The commission recommended to the council or provided feedback on the following items. The first one was use of controlled sports facilities by the public. Second was revised definition of the GALT Youth Sports Organization, location and style of the Harvey Park playground, the skate park condition and possible upgrades, and park lighting and repairs. Those are the few things that you put down for us to discuss, and we went over. Anything else you want to go over?
No, just want to thank you again for stepping up, stepping up for a second here.
Sure. It's my pleasure. And I want to thank the council for putting your trust and faith in us. We, as a group, really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Moving on to public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
And do we have any speaker sheets?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move on to the information consent calendar. Do we have any changes or modifications from council?
No.
Any discussion? For approval. Have a motion by Councilmember Campion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. If there's no further discussion, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Moving on to scheduled matters. We have none. City clerks report.
I just don't have anything tonight.
Wow. Staff. Greg, you've been quiet tonight. Anything?
I've been quiet.
Tony?
Just a real quick reminder, as you probably know, the E3 projects are going to be coming your way within the next couple of months. So if you want to get a head start on looking at the massive pile of documents, it has been online for a few weeks, the planning commission documents, which are the ones that you will be seeing. And just in case you do want to look for them, they are under city departments, community development department, planning, planning commission, and then the agendas. And you'll see the list of documents that are broken down. So, you know, just in case you want to get a head start.
Outstanding.
Could I request a printed copy?
Sure. Yeah, we will have those available.
Steve?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Anything further, Amy? Bill? Armando? Chief Drummond?
Eugene? Yeah, I'm very pleased to be here and serving the city. And I did your two days, looking forward to meeting everybody, and I've been working with staff and met with most of the council members, so very glad to be here.
We welcome you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rudolph?
I'm just happy to have all the administrative offices fully occupied.
It's nice to have just one hat.
We are here.
Okay, moving on to comments by council. Start down here, Mr. Campion.
I have nothing.
All right. Sorry?
Oh, my appointee.
Oh, yeah, I do. I do. Oh, you had a chance.
The Historical Society is having their annual dinner at the Hunan House on February 18th. That's Thursday. Takeout starts at, I believe, 5:30. Tickets are $15. A third of the ticket or $5 per ticket goes directly to the Historical Society. So anybody interested, contact me or Historical Society itself. Thank you.
All right.
So my appointee to the Youth Commission resigned, so I just want to say that if there's anyone out there that's interested in working with our Youth Commission, go by. City clerk's accepting applications, so we can make an appointment.
Okay. Vice Mayor Payne?
Nothing.
Okay. I have nothing with that. Just spinning as a drum.